Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7:00 PM on August 26th. I will start with a roll call to introduce the audience to those of us that are onstage tonight. I think it worked for us well when we were doing these purely through Zoom, and I think it's always good for us to be able to introduce them or further away for you to be able to read our name placards. So I will start with myself. I am Deborah Schut, and I am the chair. Jay Spivak, vice chair.
Present, thanks, Deb.
Thank you. Jeff Fleishman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Jackie Blay is not able to join us this evening. Laura Young.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Thank you. Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Phage Singh.
Present, thanks, Deb.
Thank you. Lisa Semenera.
Present, thank you.
And our newest member, Liz Summercorn.
Present, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to join us this evening.
Thank you.
I will move on to our administrators. Dr. Karnamolar, superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Our assistant superintendent, Dr. Nestle Rusak, is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Meddick, Director of Human Resources.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russo, our business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Moy, the executive assistant to the superintendent and board clerk, is in front of us helping to operate the screens. Thank you, Shirley. All right. I would ask if you would join me by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to begin each meeting by reading the mission statement to remind us all while we're here to do this work together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. That always is the perfect segue into our recognition piece. I'd like to call forward Mr. Noemsturm and Ms. Susan Horvath from Roaring Brook School tonight. As well when we record it for Nutmeg.
Is it working out?
Yes, thank you.
There we go. Perfect, all right. Thank you, Deb, and thank you to everybody. It's always such a privilege and an honor to be able to talk about what the awesome things are that are going on in our school, and it's really an even better opportunity to be able to do so in person tonight. And as Susan and I were really thinking about the spring RBS Avon Achievers, it was that word "opportunity" that came to mind. And opportunities in schools mean a lot of different things. Like, sometimes they mean just your traditional teaching and learning. Kids didn't know how to do something, and now they know how to do it. They didn't have a piece of information, now they do. But what's really exciting is that these two young gentlemen here that we're going to honor today took advantage of an opportunity that really extended their learning. Because I always think that one of the best kinds of ways that we become better learners is by being curious about our world, by being creative in our thinking, and taking something that matters to us and attaching it to something even greater than just that initial interest. So we're super excited to welcome up these two young gentlemen from RBS, and Ms. Horvath is going to explain the details about this.
To kind of split the difference on the mic height here. So, thank you, great introduction, and thank you for that, because we are so excited to honor two 4th grade Roaring Brook students, David Papa and Mohan Arvind. And these two students are members of our Student Council, and that in and of itself is a fantastic accomplishment. But we are so thrilled that they had the drive and the initiative to have the desire and want to teach Roaring Brook students and the community more about endangered animals. And so these two came up with a plan and devised a fundraiser that Roaring Brook students participated in. And that fundraiser, they sold mini panda keychains. They were adorable, and it was very popular. And they were able to raise nearly $600 to raise awareness about endangered animals just on their own. And that was really exciting for us, to be able to see that and to be able to witness that and experience that. And David and Mohan, in addition, with that $600 that was donated to the World Wildlife Fund, they were able to adopt, air quotes, endangered animals that Roaring Brook kind of took on. So they went and selected the animals, they came and did announcements with us, elicited other students' help in terms of making those announcements, so students and staff were aware, and we could not be more proud of their student-centered leadership. So congratulations, David, and congratulations, Mohan.
Thank you.
Thanks. Before the gentlemen step away, I want to congratulate you on the hard work that you did. This is very impressive. I was curious, when I saw your names, what grade you're in. To hear you're in 4th grade and you're already addressing these global issues in our little community makes a huge difference. You really did make an impact, so we're incredibly proud of Mohan and David for their efforts. So congratulations, gentlemen. Another round of applause. Thank you very much. This is the part of our meeting as well where we certainly want to allow anyone who came here this evening for that purpose to celebrate Mohan and David, that you can certainly step out and no one will judge you. We understand it's a school night, and you might need to do other routines this evening, so no problem with that. Our next piece is approval of board minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education regular monthly meeting minutes of March 15th?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, so Lisa is abstaining, and Liz, did you vote with us or abstain?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so two abstentions, because neither of these ladies were with us last month, so that makes sense. So you have that right, Shirley? Okay, thank you very much. All right, our next piece of the board agenda is communication from the public. And just as we started doing in our Zoom meetings, I will read first kind of the guidelines of how this works. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and our concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation, rather, it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list. I believe Mr. Conley has been collecting those. Jim, if you want to just raise your hand, thank you. And then Ms. Moy, does that work? If Ms. Moy has the list to call, okay. Ms. Moy will then call you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment, if you'd prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper this evening. If you should reach 2 and 1/2 minutes, she'll alert you with a 30-second warning. At the 3-minute mark, you will be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. Ms. Moy, who is your first speaker?
The first speaker is Kim Stevenson. Kim Stevenson from 70 Harris Road here in Avon. I'm jointly reading a letter with Annie Simpson from Friends for Equity in Avon Schools. Dear APS teachers, staff, and leadership, this letter comes to you from Friends for Equity in Avon Schools, our members and supporters. The past two years have been difficult for teachers, school staff, and leadership due to the pandemic and vitriol directed at educators that we've seen locally and nationally. We sincerely thank you for the incredible job everyone at APS has done to support our students and address these challenges with professionalism, resilience, and grace. As parents and community members, we have witnessed a growing wave of dangerous rhetoric sweep our country. This organized agenda is aimed at censoring history curricula and banning literature, music, and art. The common thread in these efforts is a bold and ugly push to silence marginalized voices and narratives and to discourage the discussion of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Sadly, this disturbing movement has come to Avon. This is alarming for many reasons. For teachers, the threat of parents trolling for CRT red flags creates low morale and may cause teachers to refrain from covering content and classroom discussions that encourage critical thinking, thereby the quality of our children's education and personal growth. This also creates a less attractive district when it comes to recruiting and retaining teachers that bring different perspectives and provide needed role models for all of our students. As parents and community members, we want to make it unequivocally clear that we support and encourage the APS community to age-appropriately do the following. Support qualified and experienced teachers in being allowed to do their jobs without doubting or questioning their professionalism or work. Ensure targeted books remain in the school libraries and curricula to protect and support intellectual freedom and not to succumb to censorship attempts. Teach complete U.S. and world history, civil rights, genocide, and Black and Latino studies. Encourage teachers to lead thoughtful, Socratic discussions of controversial and sensitive topics, including the ones above, without fear of questioning or retribution. Ensure accessibility of diverse representation and narratives in literature, art, and music. And train our teachers to appropriately have and teach the hard conversations.
Good evening. My name's Annie Simpson at 15 Old Wood Road. Why is this so important? Our community continues to become more diverse. As of 2020, 24% of Avon's population is people of color, with even higher and growing percentage of people of BIPOC students in the school system, especially in the lower grades. Similar to state and national trends, the Avon community will continue to diversify. We know from numerous disciplines that all children benefit from diverse learning environments where different races, cultures, income levels, abilities, and talents come together. Diverse classrooms encourage critical thinking, problem-solving, and creativity. Learning in integrated settings can enhance students' leadership skills. Meaningful relationships between individuals with different racial or ethnic backgrounds impacts how people treat racial and ethnic groups. Diverse classrooms prepare students to succeed in a global economy. We encourage APS teachers, staff, and leadership to continue building an education system and community that appropriately serves every student as you prepare our children for the local and global challenges they will eventually face in a rapidly evolving and diversifying world. We especially, let me repeat that, we especially thank and support APS teachers for the invaluable work you all do. Since we've submitted this letter, we have gotten 88 signatories, including seven members of our Friends for Equity Steering Committee and 81 community members. Thank you.
Ms. Moy, next.
The next one to speak is Jamie Polhemus.
Hi, Jamie Polhemus, 38 Daventry Hill Road, Navon. I'm also a founding member of the Friends for Equity in Avon Schools group. Our team recently held a community roundtable event earlier this month, on April 3rd. Can you hear me well? Okay. On April 3rd, to share with the wider community what we've been up to, hear from other community members in Avon about what the perceived strengths and areas of opportunity are with regards to equity within Avon Public Schools to help shape our priorities, goals, and work plan. We had around 30 community members at this event weighing in, many of whom are APS parents. It was a meaningful and thoughtful conversation, and our group walked away with a better understanding of what is important to other parents and kids of varied ages, races, and backgrounds in Avon Public Schools. We will be utilizing much of this feedback to inform and guide our ongoing work, and thought it would be helpful to share some of the main takeaways with you all in consideration for your ongoing work as well. Parents have noticed some positive changes in initiatives in the schools, such as the Bridges Reading Program pilot. There is a desire to see this program expanded. They have noticed more of an effort to create or to celebrate Heritage Months with bulletin boards and emphasize representation. We would like to see this more consistent and systemized. Pine Grove, One School, One Book, book choice this year was a great one. A better offering of books that address diversity and inclusion at a recent Scholastic Book Fair was noted. Administrative support of student-led groups such as the Avon Voices for Equity at the High School and the Socratic Seminars approach used in English, social studies, and other classes, starting in the middle school and into high school. This should continue and to be supported and expanded as an approach to learning. These initiatives and all of the ways that you have made gains in terms of thoughtfulness around diversity, equity, and inclusion have been and will be life-changing for many students. Thank you for making that happen and supporting the initiatives brought forth to you. Some of the gaps and weaknesses discussed include a critical need for diverse teachers in every school and at every level of leadership. The makeup of staff and leadership should reflect the growing diversity in our schools and community. A need for teachers who understand the issues and leadership that supports them. A need for a system to report, address, and track instances of bias and inequities. The perception is that issues and complaints related to DEI are not taken seriously.
I'm sorry, Ms. Polhemus, we'll have to stop you there.
Okay.
Was that 2 and 1/2?
That was 3 minutes. Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. Open choice regarding the open choice program. How do we ensure Avon students from Hartford and their families are more included and better supported in Avon and our schools and community? And a need for an effective and comprehensive equity audit in order to solve and address the problems. We need the right data to identify specific issues. And a point was made several times during the discussion at our event, that this work truly benefits everyone. It helps all students develop the ability to view and understand complex problems and events, so their students are prepared to thrive in the diverse world that they will one day lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polhemus. I would ask the audience not to clap or cheer for any comments in particular. Who is next?
Next is Catherine Lewis.
Okay, Dr. Lewis.
So I'm glad to address you, because I'm going to be talking about a questionnaire that I think perhaps came from your group, the Equity Group, but I'm not sure it came from them. And I was disturbed by this questionnaire that my student was given in his health class. I'm a physician who's been NIH-funded, so I'm particularly focused on questionnaires. My mother was a victim of Hitler in World War II. I want to clarify that she wasn't victimized because of who she was, she was victimized because of where she was, and she died from her injuries. And I'm particularly focused on informed consent. I think you should always seek informed consent before you give a questionnaire. And informed consent needs to be voluntary, informed, and competent, and my son certainly didn't give informed consent when he was given this questionnaire. The questionnaire disturbed me. It had questions about pronouns, and it encouraged secrecy from parents. It particularly encouraged the school system to keep secret pronouns, pronoun choice from parents. I knew immediately that the health teacher would never give out such a questionnaire because he's competent and excellent with what he does. And I knew that Wisconsin was engaged in aggressive litigation concerning such an incompetent questionnaire, as are many districts. I knew Avon High School would never give out such a ridiculous questionnaire because we're competent. So I immediately emailed the superintendent seeking who in the hell sent out such an incompetent questionnaire. And certainly, it wasn't a teacher. It was, I believe, perhaps, your group. Or maybe not your group. It was a group of students. And so I'm concerned about what's going on in the school system about this issue, and I want to make sure we're not subjecting our students to stuff like this. I'm concerned about the right to privacy for our students. Connecticut has a great history with right to privacy. Griswold v. Connecticut gave women the right to contraception. Roe v. Wade, we're all familiar with that, gives women choice for abortion, and this is the right to privacy, constitutional and Bill of Rights. Our students have the right to privacy too. It gives them, so I'm really fired up about this. Our students have the right to privacy. It gives them the right to study and learn. I'm concerned that our people are being asked repetitively about their pronouns. It's been asked and answered. People don't need to be badgered about this. I stood before you last June talking about the right to privacy. One of my boy, one of my boy's friends had been harassed by the LGBT kids about his pronouns to the point that he was very, very upset. We're coming into June. I would encourage people to not do this anymore in your school.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Kids have the right to privacy. Please stop harassing children about this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please don't cheer for any particular comments. Ms. Moy, do we have another speaker?
Yes, the next one is Megan Gaynard.
Can I just ask, is that, when you do that the first time, it's 2 and 1/2? Because I, okay, thank you. Megan Gaynard, 16 Brownstone Drive. I'm here tonight to also talk about equity and social-emotional learning. And I also want to let you know that I already had a wonderful conversation with Jody Krasinski, head of curriculum, and I'm happy to work with any and everyone who would like to work with me. Any facts that I state here tonight are from the science of reading, what I should have learned in college, and I want to talk to you about the science of reading. Reading is not natural. No one is born to read. Not being read to, not having a print-rich environment will help that. For struggling readers, the wait-and-see model does not work. By the end of 1st grade, students who are behind in reading don't tend to catch up even with intervention. Number two, everyone learns to read in the same way. Phonics skills and age-appropriate language comprehension. Number three, there is a known pathway in the brain for reading. Speech sounds to print and meaning of words. We can strengthen or reroute instruction with good instruction in language. Number four, our instruction should be deliberate, and it should be the right kind of instruction. We will hit everyone, including those who are language impaired and dyslexics. There is probably about 2% of the population that really can't learn to read, not 50%, like our numbers show. Number five, all students benefit from explicit and systematic instruction to form reading pathways. And number six, prevention, and you might be interested in this, is easier and cheaper than intervention. And the right instruction will change the course of a person's life. According to the Department of Justice, 2/3 of 3rd graders not reading proficiently will end up incarcerated or on public assistance for their lives. 16% don't graduate, or if they do, they can't read. Current research being conducted nationwide is determining the number of prisoners with dyslexia or other reading issues. The fact that Avon has not started our equity and SEL work by closely examining our reading curriculum more closely is alarming to me. Is the board aware that some of our Tier 2 intervention is taught by a tutor and not by a teacher interventionist? The fact that ESER funds and equity and SEL money would not be directed here is alarming. At the last board meeting, on a slideshow presented on equity and SEL, it said that Avon intends to address barriers to learning and teaching to reengage students who have become disengaged. They would not be disengaged if they knew how to read and felt they had a future. I am asking for funds set aside for equity, SEL, and ESER to be reallocated to our K through 2, especially reading instruction, intervention, decodable books, interventionist, curriculum recognized to be aligned with SOAR. And you might want to take a look at some of the reading league tools to assess our current curriculum and what we're planning on using. Can I finish this last sentence?
One more sentence.
Thank you. Because reading is real equity, and when people know how to read, they have opportunities available to them, and they don't need to be put, we don't want to put a Band-Aid on the problems. We want to fix them and give people what Dr. Dyslexia Dude said, hope. Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached our 15 minutes. Ms. Moy, do we still have people on the list?
We have six more people.
I will ask the board if they're comfortable with extending public comment.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so if we have six more, that's potentially 18 more minutes. Are we comfortable with that? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Greg Wolf.
Sorry, tall people problems. Here we go. Okay, so Greg Wolf, 5 King Richard's Court. I've often found, as a teacher and a writer, that hot-button issues can best be addressed through allegories, so if you'll indulge me for a second. So imagine you're throwing a dinner party, and you have all your friends over, and the dinner party's going great, great food, great conversation, and one of the people decides to let everybody else know that they've joined a new religion. And they say, "I have never felt better about myself in my life. It's a fantastic religion. I love it." Everybody, of course, says, "Well, that's fantastic. I'm so happy for you. You're glowing. Great." Okay, so it keeps going a little way, but then the person says, "No, no, no. I think all of you should also join this religion." Well, of course, you know, you're gonna say, "Well, actually, I'm Jewish, but thank you very much." But when, if that person ends up pushing, again, "No, you really should join this. I really don't want to." No, if you don't join this, you're not a good person. Well, of course, you're gonna push back against that. You're gonna say, "I am a good person," and then you've got a fight going. Now, you're throwing the dinner party, so what do you do? You're the host, so you have two choices. One, you can come down on one side or the other and risk alienating that other guest or guests. Or two, you can say, "This is not the appropriate venue for this conversation," and pass the butter. And the school is that dinner party, okay? You've got people believing different things, and that's fine, and that's fantastic. But if it's a political matter, if it's something, and political being, half the people believe one thing, half the people believe the other. If you are to choose, if the school is actually to say, "Yes, we're coming down on this side," then you are alienating half the people that send their kids to that school, when you could very easily just say, "This is not an appropriate subject for school during school hours." And we're talking about anything political having to do with, like if you're showing something on the television, that's fine. Show something to counterbalance it. If you're gonna teach something, teach the counter to that as well. That's what school does. It educates, it does not indoctrinate. We're supposed to be teaching the kids how to think, not what to think. And so to let them talk about it and discuss, even if it's not the politically correct way of handling something, that is something that school is supposed to do, and if it's not, then that topic should not be something that's discussed at school. So basically, that's my point, that school is for education, not for all of these extra things being thrown in here causing fight and strife in the community. Quite frankly, you know, as much as I love you guys, I would not be here tonight if there was not these issues. I'm tired of the fighting. I'm sure you guys are tired of the fighting, even I'm sure, you know, the other groups are tired of the fighting. So basically, keep it out of the school. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Again, we'll just try to keep it so we're on time here. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Ms. Moy, our next.
Next one is John Lumani.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is actually Lee John Lumani. I am going to be labeled a racist and homophobe for these comments, but here I go. I was born in Yugoslavia. My ethnicity is Albanian. I am a Muslim-American. My family and friends died in ethnic cleansing throughout wars in Yugoslavia in the 1990s. I came to the United States as 1 years old. I grew up in Bridgeport, along many minority children. Some of my best friends in the world are Black and Latino. I currently work in the hair industry, an industry that is dominated by gay people. And I have over 50 people that I'm really good friends with that are in the industry. I have clients... I have clients who are gay. I have many married gay couples that come to me. And I tell them about what my children are learning about today. I have three children in the schools. I have a second-grade daughter at Pine Grove. I have a fifth-grade son at Thompson Brook. And I have a sophomore at the high school. And I cannot believe that Dr. Seuss has been thrown out of the libraries and it's been replaced with books like Gender Queer. Gender Queer is a book that is prominently displayed in the Avon School Library, and it teaches boys how to have oral sex with other boys. I don't know who's responsible for having that book in the library, but that book is straight-up pornography. And whoever is responsible for that, shame on you. Seriously.
Okay, next.
Next one is Carrie Firestone.
Okay, Ms. Firestone.
Hi, Carrie Firestone, 36 Cambridge Crossing. And I'm actually here to talk about something in light of a number of incidents that have come to our attention in recent months, compounding incidents before that, but it's a general statement I've written out. Recent national campaigns aimed at fomenting anti-LGBTQ hate have been, wait, sorry, have found like-minded allies in Avon. These individuals have made a hobby of targeting and vilifying our LGBTQ kids, most egregiously hyper-focusing on trans kids and their families. The small but vocal contingent of adults is transmitting messages to their children who then spread ugly vitriol online and in all our Avon schools. Sorry, this is emotional for me. Our LGBTQ kids must walk bravely through their day, knowing there are people in their community who want to silence them, demean them, deem them mentally ill or somehow sinful, who want the essence of what makes them who they are to simply not exist. They must bear this burden while bearing the many other burdens assigned to our children. How difficult and exhausting must that be? Our LGBTQ parents must sit bravely at home, worrying about all the things we worry about as parents trying to safely usher our children into adulthood. Yet these parents must also worry that their children will hear words they can never unhear, see glances they can never unsee. They know the statistics, they know the consequences of a concerted effort to shove their children into the margins, that this makes their children more vulnerable to depression and suicide and victims of violence. Now they must endure deeply painful comments and accusations from their own neighbors. Our LGBTQ students deserve to be seen, heard, and celebrated exactly as they are. They deserve to see themselves on the pages of books. Because when we don't see ourselves on the pages of books, it's easy to wonder, "Do I even matter?" They deserve privacy to make medical decisions and decisions about how they want the world to address them without fear of the basest among us inserting, "None of your business opinions." And I'd just like to, if parents and children in the room who may be in the LGBTQ community, I just want you to know, we see you, we hear you, we value you, we embrace you, we recognize the gifts you bring to our community. We recognize that you, like all of us, want to be safe, to belong, to be free, to find meaning and joy in your life. And we are here by your side, and we will protect you with our words and our actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Firestone. Ms. Moy?
Next one we have is Megan Belvall. I'd also like to ask if they have written, anybody who's spoken, if they have written statements to maybe pass them to Jim Connolly, who then pass it to me.
So that they can be included with your minutes?
Right.
Thank you. Megan?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Megan Belvall, 64 Daventry Hill Road. I am speaking for myself and a large number of Avon parents who are concerned about the political agenda that has infiltrated Avon's schools. This agenda is creating an uncomfortable learning environment for a significant, significant number of our students. This agenda is eroding the traditional role and rights of parents by promoting and encouraging lifestyle choices and beliefs which are antithetical to our own. We believe that the promotion of politics, medical, and lifestyle choices have no place in our schools. Here are some examples of concerning political practices and events that I found when I started to pay closer attention to what is happening in our schools. CNN is shown in Avon middle and elementary school classrooms. We do not believe that this news channel with an obvious left-leaning political message is appropriate for school. Why aren't Fox News or Prager University videos used in our school instead? Or even better, how about we remove all TV news from the classroom? At freshman orientation this year, all students were given name tags which asked for the students' names and their pronouns. Our family does not feel the need to use pronouns when we identify ourselves, and we do not want this lifestyle choice forced upon our children in school. This causes, this causes those who choose not to use pronouns to feel uncomfortable, bullied, and alienated. If a child wants to use pronouns under their name, they may freely do so, but do not require the rest of the student population to do this. Are you familiar with the gender unicorn? Well, you should be, because teachers were taught about it this year during a professional development day. It is a cartoon used to teach elementary schools' children that they can identify as male, female, or other genders, and that they can be sexually or emotionally attracted to male, female, or other genders. I have copies here in case anyone is interested in taking a look at this. Next, a survey created by the Student for Equity Club was recently disseminated to all students by the high school principal without parental notification or consent. While the survey was optional, the students were asked about personal information, and the questions were framed in ways which pushed a political agenda. We do not consent to our children being data mined for their personal information and being exposed to questions which attempt to influence their lifestyle choices. There are currently fact posters on the walls throughout the Avon High School about the transgender lifestyle, which are clearly intending to influence students. While the school, why is the school promoting only one lifestyle choice and not others? What kind of precedent does the school setting here? Can conservative groups now put posters up throughout the school promoting their lifestyle choices? How about we stop all attempts to influence our children into a certain lifestyle? I hope the Board of Ed will look more closely at these issues and will remove politics from our schools. I encourage all parents to look at every homework assignment and to start paying attention to what our kids are exposed to during the school day. Thank you.
Please.
Next one is Evis Jasta.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Evis Jasta, 183 Haynes Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my opinion about the Avon Public School System today. I moved to Avon four and a half years ago from East Hartford. I have visited Avon once prior to moving to this town and immediately knew that this is the town I want to raise my kids in. This because I thought my kids will get here the best education they can get. Prior to talking about some of my concerns today, I want to speak a little bit about my family background. My husband and I were born in Albania, a communist country, until 1991. And when I say communist, it was completely communist, isolated, and no means of free speech, religion, sexuality, or anything else that we as a society thrive for. You probably are going to ask yourself how I connect the story with the topics discussed in today's meeting. Well, unfortunately, I'm seeing some patterns that, for God's sakes, are not comparable to what we have experienced, but I'm seeing some nuances in the sense of freedom of speech. If I'm afraid to speak out my opinion, this is where, where it becomes really concerning for me. I am used to being careful about what I'm saying because I've learned the hard way, but do I really want this about my children? Do I want them to be afraid to say who they are and what they want? Do I want them to be afraid for standing for their own opinion? By all means, I respect all cultures, races, religions, genders, and sexualities, but please do so with mine as well. Respect my culture, my traditions, and my values. This entails that I would like to be able to teach my kids my family traditions and values. I hear us always talking about being inclusive, equitable, and diverse. That's great, but I believe while we're trying to be inclusive for some people, we're being exclusive for some others at the same time. I didn't choose my race, and I didn't choose my religion, nor did I choose my country of inheritance. But one thing that I chose is to move to this country because of freedom, and this is freedom of speech. Please let my child be a child and teach them age-appropriate things. They will grow up fast enough to learn everything else that the scary world has to offer. Please don't take the right away from me to teach my kids about sexuality and everything that comes with it. I have kept my kids for nine months, and I've worked so hard from the day I gave birth to them to give them the best that I consider to be the best for them. Don't take that away from me. Sexual content comparable to that of gender queer books should not exist in our schools' libraries. And gender unicorn should not be taught to any grade. How about we talk about reading, writing, science, addition, subtraction, multiplication, geography? Can I finish my sentence?
Is it just one more?
Yes.
Okay.
Stop the nonsense of involving the kids too early to some things that even I, at the age of 36, have a hard time understanding. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And again, I'll just ask that we please refrain from clapping. Ms. Moy, is it one more name on the list?
We have one more on this list and a few more signed up after this list was submitted, so maybe for the second half of communication.
Let me ask the board, would you like to hold off the, we'll have the one that was already included, but the other two now? Or would you prefer to do it at the second public comment?
I'm good with now.
You're good with, Jay is comfortable with now?
I'm good with now.
Okay, Jeff is comfortable with now? Okay, then we'll stop at, after three? And then if there's more by the time we get to the second public comment, is that, does that make sense? All right, so our next one?
I believe there are three more on the second.
Correct.
So it'd be a total of four.
Oh, three in addition to the one? Okay, everybody's comfortable with that, correct? Yes, okay, thank you.
The next one is George from Bronson Road. I couldn't read the last name.
Thank you, but I'll reiterate this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have Chloe Knopf.
Okay, Ms. Knopf.
Hello, my name is Chloe Knopf. I live at Oak Ridge Drive. I am a graduate of the Avon Public School System, and I just wanted to say a couple things. From my experience, and I was actually raised when diversity and inclusion efforts were ramping up during, in the early 2000s, and I can say from experience that the lessons that truly enriched me were ones that focused on diversity of opinion and diversity of personhood and perspective, rather than any superficial characteristic of anybody's, of what makes up a person, like, like race, or gender, or sexuality. All of those things are completely private and peripheral, and just to emphasize and to focus on that so much for children teaches it, teaches them that it's more important and weighted in their lives than it should be. And that's, that's what I wanted to say on that. And I also wanted to thank the people from Albania for sharing their stories because I, and I want, I think that it bears repeating that it, people have come to the US like to seek, to seek freedom of speech and opportunity, and we're, we're not learning from what's happening in other places where it's taken away. And I think we need to listen and, we need to see similarities and parallels of what's happening here and the way that, and the way, and the way that some kind of ideologically, ideological purity is eclipsing any kind of free speech. I think we need to focus on that, and I think that we need to understand the ways in which that free speech is being, is being taken away and corrupted. And I just wanted to say that as someone who is relatively young and did grow up in the Avon Public School System, I know, and I know it's unorthodox for some, like a person like me and, like a person as young as me to have this opinion. It's, I just think that that's extremely important, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Knopf. Okay.
Next one is Lee Knopf.
Okay. Ms. Knopf?
Under the current circumstances, more than talk is needed, and even school board meetings is not an opportunity for back-and-forth discussion. Full transparency is needed. That's a most beautiful and cleansing concept that is often overlooked. True transparency is kind of a tonic. It can dispel distrust, confusion, frustration for everyone. And it's the starting point to understanding how to actually solve problems. Distrust, confusion, and frustration will persist and will continue to erode our community if transparency doesn't take a lead role or is skirted. These are some matters which demand full transparency, which parents and the public require to be fully informed, and which is their right here in Avon and in America. The existence of CRT, SEL, or whichever of the various carefully worded names are used continues to be denied or cloaked by many, but we know it takes place and is only growing. Certainly takes place in Connecticut, and it's here in Avon. For authentic transparency, it would be useful for parents to have full access to grant funding pursuits and decision-making, such as going back three years, all grant proposals, federal, state, local, responded to, funded, and in what amounts the reporting required, and the written reports specifying activities and how all funds were specifically spent, plus the process by which the grant funding prospects are decided upon, including what opportunities there were at the outset, for parents and public to be heard regarding whether or not they want programs and the goals of such grants to be undertaken by the schools, not just pursued to obtain money when the purpose and goals of such grants are not necessarily what's best for and could even be harmful to our young people. All just mentioned also applies to searches and hirings of outside consultants and new faculty. And detailed curricula, not just vaguely worded outlines, are necessary to see, and, for example, SEL, CRT, to see how that's taught as a standalone as well as being woven into some or essentially all academic subjects. In addition, there's the so-called, there's so-called wellness. That was introduced decades ago into the US public schools, and it's become a burgeoning and misplaced industry in the schools, such that now the schools, in my view, are proxy for the mental health profession, but without mental health professionals in charge. And concurrent students whose parents do not acquiesce to wellness-SEL integration into the school day opt out of wellness and SEL. And if so, could, okay. Can I take somebody's time who didn't finish? Thank you.
That's not the way we normally operate, so that we can have another person give their perspective as well.
Well, I thought we were at the end of the list.
I think we have one more.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Knopf. Next.
Last one, we have Haley Guerrero.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Guerrero.
Haley Guerrero, 106 Fox Den Road. And thank you for extending the comment portion. I want to state my support for educators' rights to stand up to hate and engage the facts so that our schools stay safe for every single student. Avon Public Schools must provide a thorough, accurate, fact-based education and teach students to respect the equal value of every person. It takes more than words to enact systemic change, so I'm also here to tell you about a potential community solution. I'm supporting local grassroots organization Friends for Equity in Avon Schools by helping organize Avon's first community dialogues event called Avon Aspires, set to take place in October. This is an interactive facilitated series of conversations that opens lines of communication to achieve mutual understanding between all I encourage school and town leaders, students, parents, and all community members to keep this event on their radar and plan to participate. It is one way that we can make a lasting change for the next generation of students and our students today. So, thank you for all you do, and thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Guerrero. And surely that's everyone, correct? Thank you, everyone, for participating. I assure you that we will make sure that someone gets back to you about your comments and concerns or questions, so we appreciate your feedback. Okay, next would be under Items of Information and Proposals, our Student Representative Report. We don't have Sawyer with us this evening, but Charlotte, our junior rep, is here to give us an update.
Hi, everyone. My name is Charlotte Perry, and I'm just going to give a report from each of the K through 12 schools. So, starting with AHS, a lot of students are really excited for Falcon Day, which is a day where students get to participate in like specialized groups, kind of like a day for like joining other clubs. And in addition, we also are starting ticket sales for our spring musical called Sister Act, and it premieres on April 29th. Today was actually Denim Day, where students wore denim to show their support for sexual assault awareness, and that was hosted by the Circles Club. This Thursday, juniors are taking the NGSS, which is a science test that I know that's also taken by eighth graders. And the junior and seniors are very excited to announce that 375 prom tickets were sold this week, which is very, very impressive considering that in the past years, we've had very low attendance. Next is Avon Middle School. The two robotics teams have advanced to the World Championships in Texas this May, which is very excited, exciting, and they are asking for donations through PayPal to support their team and send them to Nationals. In addition, the student council spelling Butterbraid is selling frozen pastries dough until May 2nd, and the Fame Friends of Avon Music Education is looking for AMS parent volunteers who have a student involved in music or theater. They're planning a coffeehouse event where students get to perform, and all the proceeds will go to the World Central Kitchen. Next is TBS. They have a production of Seussical Junior, which has sold out already for the first three shows. There, there's been four orchestra students who have rehearsed and performed at the Hartford Convention Center. In addition, they're also participating in the Battle of the Books for the March of Dines and have raised $2,600. And they are also having a yearbook cover contest for all the students where they can vote on which one they would like to see represented. Second to last is Roaring Brook School. They have plans to start course registration for 2022 to 2023 school year in early May. They celebrated Earth Day with inviting parents and students to have a story walk on the RBS Trails after school on Friday, and they also had their first in-person kindergarten parent night since 2019. Lastly is Pine Grove Nursery School, where they are celebrating Pine Grove's birthday, which is May 2nd, and they're inviting friends, or family of the students to come and celebrate, and they're selling tickets this week. They're also having, or they already had the Boosterthon Fun Run, which raised over $40,000. And they're going to use this new money for playground equipment, field trips, author visits, and any other needs. They also celebrated Fitness Day with exercise for all the students, and they're also looking for parent volunteers for installing a mural that has been delayed due to COVID. And that is all the K through 12 schools.
That is fantastic, Charlotte. That's a lot of research that you've done for us with all of your own schoolwork to do as well, but it's, it's amazing to hear what is going on in the buildings, and it's just fun to, to hear it from a student as well. So, thank you for doing the research on that. We have lots of arts things going on. It is exciting to be back in person for the kindergarten parent night, so thank you for sharing all those components. We appreciate it. Next is our financial report with Ms. Russo.
Good evening. The month of March was relatively quiet month for financials. We have some budget transfers later in the agenda to clean up the variances in both the certified and non-certified lines we've talked about the last few months that we had due to some, some leaves for some employees, as well as our contracts that were put in place with some of our unions, our parent educators, interventionist, nutrition services this current year. We also had some variance in our teacher substitute instruction lines as we employed some long-term substitutes to fill those vacancies due to the leaves. So, budget transfer 2022078 included in the packet under Consent Agenda cleared those salary line items. In other expenses, we've continued to see rising energy costs as we have our own homes. Oil, electricity, natural gas continues to rise. We've been leveraging some savings in other line items to offset those rising costs, and budget transfer 2022079 is clearing those variances and hoping getting us through the rest of the winter. We do have a new, we have a collaboration with the town that we do every year to lock in energy costs, and that contract starts March 1st. We're hoping that will stabilize some electricity supplier costs, as well as we were happy at the, that the Board of Ed, the last meeting, and then the Town Council moved forward with the, of the solar panels. So, next year at this time, hopefully, we'll have some additional energy offsets at the high school in Roaring Brook. In our contracted services, supply and equipment lines, some of the schools ask for some small transfers between their equipment and supply lines to offset some needed repairs of different equipment, schooled equipment, such as microscopes and scales at the schools. The budget transfers 202264 through 75, as well as a larger global transfer of 2022079 cleared those variances. In special education, we continue to have an unencumbered balance in our special education tuition line. That'll be used to move forward our escrow payments for next year, so that, at minimum, that balance, and maybe a little bit more as we finish up our IEP and PBT meetings for the rest of the year and those settlements. We currently have six students in that escrow account. We have some variances in transportation, as well as our liability to transport our students to Anna Grace Magnet School as they move to their permanent home outside of the town, left us some savings in that private school line item. We use that to offset some increased costs we have for our late bus. Thankfully, our students are attending a lot of after-school activities, as you see here with the musical and, and sports, so we've had a lot more use of that late bus. Our general ed, unencumbered balance for the end of the month, ending March 31st, 2022, was a little over $3.3 million, or 5.33%, compared to last year at this time of 5.5 million, or 9.07%. The main variation there is due to the way we treat our medical insurance this year with our collaborative with the town, and we pay that upfront to them, so that's the main differential between that 4% difference you see. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions from board members? No? All right. Thank you so much. That one-sheeter is really appreciated. We appreciate you walking us through that. Next is our committee and liaison reports. First is Curriculum and Professional Practices. Normally, Jackie would give an update, but Dr. Carnemola agreed to do that on her behalf tonight.
Just quickly, we have a rescheduled meeting, May 10th.
In place of May 3rd, it was going to be, correct? All right, thank you. Finance, Jay?
So, as always, Susan Russo did a great job explaining everything we discussed at the meeting. As you mentioned, the transfers that were discussed are going to be part of our consent calendar tonight, and also in the consent calendar, we have the donations, so I'd like to thank those in the community for all their donations, very nice of the support we receive there. And also within our agenda tonight, we have the audit report, which is going to be discussed later. Our next meeting is Monday, May 16th at 6:00 p.m., and that's different than what's been scheduled because of a conflict, so it's Monday, May 16th at 6:00 p.m.
Excellent, thank you. It was May 10th, so now it's May 16th. Perfect. Negotiations, we do not have an update for that at this time. Next would be policy. Laura?
So, we discussed several policies at our last meeting, two of which have been brought up on tonight's agenda for the full board to take a look at as a first read. One of them is the Green Cleaning Program policy. The other is the exemption from instruction policy, and the Student Health Services policy will be continued at a policy level at our subcommittee for further discussion, and we will be talking about these on our new business.
Excellent, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Then our liaison report for the board representative to correct. Dr. Carnemola, did you have anything? Okay, thank you very much. Next would be the board chair update. I had a couple of things that I just wanted to mention to board members. May 2nd is our annual town budget meeting. It will be held here in the auditorium with the Town Council and the Board of Finance. It begins at 7:00 p.m., so I just remind everybody, it's good for all of us to be there if we can be in order to show support. Again, it's the last opportunity for the town to truly see the budget presented prior to the referendum. The second one is a reminder to board members, Mrs. Tuberty has given us a deadline of Friday, April 29th, in order to give her your regalia sizes and which university you attended, so that for graduation, we are dressed appropriately. So, I'd remind you, if you have not done that yet, try to do it by tomorrow, so she's not having to hunt any of us down. That's one of the best parts of being a board member, is to participate in that. So, I encourage everyone to come if they're able to. It is definitely worth all that hard work to see the kids celebrate their accomplishments, so that's important. So, remember to get back to Ms. Tuberty. Does everybody have that email? If you don't, you can email me, and I'm certainly happy to forward that again. And now I will send it to Dr. Carnemola.
Thank you. For our hiring report, Mr. Meddick?
Good evening, thank you. As you can see from the hiring report, we have received a significant number of resignations from members of our non-certified staff. We have begun to fill many of those vacancies. In addition, we do have some retirements. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Ms. Lane, who is one of our fabulous school nurses here at Avon High School, who'll be departing us after many, many years of service to the district. In addition, Ms. Tina Perla and Ms. Riley will be retiring from both in Grade Two at Roaring Brook School, and we thank them for their many dedicated years of service. And though I know the two of them won't, you know, I could see them kind of getting lower in their seats right now, I do want to recognize Dr. Eileen O'Neill and Mr. Mike Rankowitz, our student family support specialist and high school principal, who have also announced their retirements this year, and as a colleague to them, we appreciate all of their time, effort, and professionalism with us over the past few years. We have begun to hire for the upcoming school year. We have all of our positions posted, and our staff is working to find the next wave of Avon High School staff for the completion of this year, as well as next year.
Thank you, Mr. Meddick. And our enrollment report, see, we are status quo at this time from the previous report. However, I wanted to update you on the number of current process kindergarten registrations. We are at 94, which I think we have more in the pipeline even as we speak. Those are completed registrations, and I would say that is a little more than what we might typically, typically see in other years at this time, but it's hard to say because sometimes it just may be that people are registering earlier than usual. On our strategic plan, I just, I'll just say a couple of things, because we have folks from the high school here with us tonight, under new business, to talk about a large portion of what has been our strategic plan over the past few years, which is our portrait of the graduate work that we have done through community input, K and K to 12, faculty and staff and administrator input. So, I won't take up time discussing that twice. I'll let the folks we asked to come to do it, do it for you. On the other hand, just a couple of things to point out that I think might be helpful. One, our strategic plan is continually updated, that we've put online, you know, that we have had to put up and take down a number of things over the past six months as we've transitioned to the new website. We also transitioned just within the last few days to a newer version of our curriculum platform, our Edge of Planet, which is where when you click, now when you click online. In the past, if you looked at our curriculum, we were loading those up from, having to download them from Edge of Planet. We now have a system that syncs the two together, and so you'll see it's easier to find the written curricula that's online. We have, as you know, been working to either write if it didn't exist, or rewrite and review curriculum from the years past. The majority have been written since 2014, so we are nearly finished with reviewing again the core curriculum in math, for example, and in science. At our next Curriculum and Professional Practices committee, I expect you'll see those brought from the, because we'll have a meeting in between from the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee here in the district that will refer some of those newer curricula to you and books that are related, excuse me, to them. So, one thing I think bears mentioning, based on some of the conversations I've had over the past week or so, and at least some of the comments here tonight, though it might not speak directly to some, there's a framework for student, what we in district call student wellness, that has been posted by the state of Connecticut, and it was put out in 2021. I believe it's a result of some number of years of work at the State Department, though none of us here were involved in that, so I can't speak directly to it. To be clear, our curriculum is online for wellness from grades K through 12. All units are there. Our curriculum is not the framework that, that is posted online from the Connecticut State Department that many people have called me and asked me about with some concerns about the developmental appropriateness of some of what's in the Connecticut State framework. I will say, again, just briefly, I don't want to take too much time on it. I've talked to a number of people, and I'm happy to talk to anyone else that would like to about it. But the portions of that curriculum that I've heard some concerns about the developmental appropriateness of are not in our curriculum at those grade levels or at all. So, to be clear, the state develops frameworks, school districts develop curriculum, those are utilized as guideposts for things that we have to follow based on the law. And an example of a law that dictates some of our curriculum, particularly to wellness, is a law that was passed many years ago that states that all public schools must engage students in instruction related to the HIV virus, and, which is done in later years, obviously not in younger grades. But that is something, if you look at the framework and in our curriculum, you will see similarities because the law requires that. So, I just wanted to point that out because I know it's been an issue that has been raised a number, excuse me, a number of times over the past week or so. Spent quite a bit of time explaining the difference between the state frameworks and ours. We are, again, not required to adopt them. We utilize them as guides for what we do need to do. And any other questions about the curriculum? Glad to hear someone reached out and spoke with Jody to take those comments into consideration. I think that person is gone right now, but I'd like to follow up with Jody on that, related to the reading curriculum. Welcome, Liz, because I almost forgot to say that. Liz and I met last week and started the process of transitioning her to the board. I know Liz is very excited to be here with us. I don't need to speak for you, Liz, I'm sure you'll say the same later, but we had a good meeting to get acclimated and turn over all of the materials and the policies and so on, and between Ms. Shute on the board side and me as the superintendent, we will find the new board member training for Liz also, as the rest of you have gone through. And unless, I'm thinking there was something else that, there is, I'll just ask, I don't know if they're still out there. I know how to, I know how to reach Ms. Chloe Knopf as a, as a former student. Ms. Lee Knopf, this is, Mom, if you would email, because I don't think the comment was finished, and I don't have a way of contacting. I'm saying that, Deb, because you mentioned that I would follow, someone here would follow up, and that I can't do if we don't have contact information. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Were there any questions? Okay. So, the next piece is our consent calendar, and just as a refresher, this is a grouping of items that we can block vote together. However, board members do have the opportunity to remove an item if they'd rather discuss it prior to voting on it. I do want to take a moment to recognize the generous donations that are included in here as well. We do appreciate the work that is done outside of the school funding in order to fully enrich the experience that we have in our buildings here. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Deb.
Thank you, Thage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Now, on to new business, our healthy food certification. This is an annual event for us, and I saw Mrs. Dryers with us this evening. Passes unanimously. Okay? Thank you very much. Now on to new business, our healthy food certification. This is an annual event for us, and I saw Mrs. Dryers with us this evening. Would you mind, Maggie, just speaking to it as a refresher for new board members and for seasoned board members as to what this entails?
Sure. Good evening. So as Ms. Schut mentioned, every year we, or you as a board, vote to certify that we will comply and follow the Connecticut nutritional standards. Can you hear me? I'm a little short here. And there's two parts to this vote. The first part is that whether you choose to follow these nutritional standards and to certify with the healthy food certification. If you choose to do that, we receive federal funding of 10 cents per lunch sold. The second part is an exemption, and that is, there's three parts to that. Food that is sold to students at an event outside of the school day, and it cannot be sold out of a vending machine. So at an event, you'd be able to sell whatever you wanted to. So at a football game, if the boosters have, they're selling some kind of snacks. They do not have to follow the regulations. They're very clear with this what an event is. An event is a basketball game, a school play, something like that. It is not practice or rehearsal. So what, there's the, if you have it, I think, I believe you have it in front of you.
Thank you. Just found it. Thank you.
So if you look at that, there's the first part is the motion language to comply and to certify. And then the second part would be, I would recommend just combining the food and beverage exemption into the same vote, and that's the last, that's at the bottom of the second And so I, as the Director of Nutrition Service, would recommend yes, but that's up to you to vote.
Thank you, Maggie. Are there any questions regarding this? Go ahead, Lynn. Just press your button.
I thought it was green. Why wouldn't we vote for it? I mean, why would anyone not vote for healthy food? I don't understand why it's an issue.
I think in a state like ours, there really is not a reason for us not to. Years ago, there were not the smart, there weren't as many regulations where you could choose to sell things that didn't comply for financial reasons. Now there's Connecticut nutrition standards, and there's the smart snacks, which, so if you don't comply, the smart snacks are slightly less strict, the regulations than Connecticut's, and you would have to follow those. So to follow the slightly stricter regulations and then receive the 10 cents per meal makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Did that help, Lynn?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So I want to make sure we do this correctly, Maggie. There's two that we're actually reading, correct? So the one that's on the screen is at the bottom of page 115 for us.
Yes.
So I will read this motion pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-215F. The Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organization and groups. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Passes unanimously. And then Maggie, am I correct? The second one is for the beverage exemptions. Is that correct?
Yes, and I would suggest the one at the bottom, which combines the food and beverages together, so you don't have to do two separate votes.
Okay, I appreciate that. So starting on page 116, moving into 117. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So again, do you want me to read it, or does someone else want to take a turn?
Is that what we're doing?
Sure. Thank you, Jay.
So I'll make the motion that the Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut national standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Or two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held, and it must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Maggie. We appreciate it. All right, everyone. Next new business item is Policy 3524.2, green cleaning program.
So we did have robust conversation around both of these policies that are being presented tonight, and I'm hoping Dr. Carnemola can give us an overview of why we have brought this up for a first read.
Thank you. So on page 119, the green cleaning program, I know you've had a chance to review this before it came tonight, since we discussed it at the policy meeting. This is a change, the law has changed. As you know, during the pandemic, active pandemic, I'm not sure when we can call it endemic, I hope it's now, we were able to utilize different cleaning materials than we had in the past because we were told by the Department of Public Health to utilize disinfectants and so forth to clean. In the past, that had not been allowed at all. Everything that was utilized in schools had to meet certain regulations related to green cleaning. That changed during the last two years, and a part of that, the law now makes permanent. And so if you see it at the top, pursuant to subsection, and list the law for you, any disinfectant, disinfecting cleaner sanitizer, or any other antimicrobial product approved by federal law may be used by the board. So what it is telling us is that we can continue to utilize those when and as necessary. However, the remaining pieces of our policy, if you notice, most of this has not changed much. In other words, of course, the goal is still to try to use green cleaning products when we can, and also to notify parents, students, staff of what is being utilized, which those sheets are posted in schools and online. You'll see the notifications at time, too. This isn't the pesticide piece, but that's a similar process when we utilize something that is different than the norm. We notify individuals in the school. Basically, the bottom line is, the policy remains the same in terms of green policy, green cleaning, that that is the preferred method. However, we may utilize other disinfectants, cleaners, and sanitizers. Bleach is an example of that. Bleach was something you weren't able to use in the past in schools. Hand sanitizer wasn't allowed because of the alcohol content. Both of those are now allowed.
Questions from the board? Dr. Carnemola, you'd like for us to take action on this this evening?
Yes, unless there are other questions or concerns that we didn't discuss the policy or tonight, because, as I said, the law has already changed, and this is what we have been following based on what we were till very recently required to do.
So Laura, would you like to make a motion?
Just to make clear, there are no concerns or issues or changes as this has been presented tonight for a first read.
Okay. Can I, I'm sorry, Laura, that just reminded me as I saw Mr. Fleischman next to me. Yes, this has come from board council. This has been, this is the policy, this is the policy that the changes, the legal changes, went through board council.
All right. So hearing none, I would like to make a motion that Policy 3524.1, the green cleaning program policy, will be updated, revised, as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Our next item of business is exemption from instruction, Policy 6144.1.
Thank you. This policy was brought to our attention as part of a list of policies that were sent out, first, I believe, by CAE, the Board of Education Association, and Ms. Young as the policy chair forwarded that along to me. It had already been on our list from Shipman and Goodwin as one to look at. However, there aren't major changes here. It was, and we can talk through what the changes are, but this was something that both CAE and Shipman advised school districts and boards of education to look at the current policies you had and ensure that you did have an exemption from instruction policy. Number one, we are, as I mentioned earlier, we are required by law to teach certain pieces of curriculum. You see that in here with the AIDS instruction that I mentioned earlier. However, we are also required by law to allow families to opt out of instruction related to anything that is required by law. So dissection of animals, you see AIDS instruction, medical, which we had a conversation at policy is not, isn't truly necessary in this policy. It's not in the Shipman model policy, to be clear. But we already had it in our policy, and we had a conversation, and from my perspective, I advised the policy committee, and I think we agreed, that it wasn't necessary to be taken out either, because we do follow medical exemptions all the time for students, and this just reiterates what we already do. But you're not required to have that by law in this policy. It's a practice that we have to engage in regardless. And likewise, if you turn the page, if you could go to the next one, surely, for alternative assignments. Thank you. This is clarifying both what we have to do legally and what the practice is related to providing alternative assignments for students who may opt out of some of the curriculum.
Okay.
I'll just pause and see if you have questions. I don't want to read things you can see in front of you.
Sure. Are there any questions from board members regarding this policy?
Jeff.
Jeff, go for it. Thank you.
Just a clarification. Looking at what's crossed out now, are students, will students under this policy will be able to use the religious exemption? Or is this no longer? I'm not confused on the wording.
Thank you. So that one, no. There are religious exemptions from instruction. There were, there still are, this is, I'm sorry, we talked about this policy, and I just neglected to mention it because I talked about the medical. Board council recommended that we take that out because it's covered in other pieces of policy related to religion. And as I explained in the policy committee meeting, really, there are a number of reasons that we might exempt a student from instruction of any particular item, and not all of them are going to be contained here. Some might have to do with a family's request, some might have to do with a student's personal issues, you know, exempting them from the kind of instruction, for example, that might trigger a mental health issue in a student. There are a number of reasons that our schools work with families and students that way. So this one, Jeff, is another example of being covered under that and also in a different policy. So it was recommended to remove it from this one because it wasn't related to the same legal parameters.
If I can add some follow-up. Looking, again, so we're looking at scenarios where there are exemptions, and they accept the back that talks about alternative assignments. Is there any sort of guidance, A, for educators in terms of what those assignments will look like? And are there any safeguards to ensure students who are given an exception aren't open to ridicule or expose private information or so forth?
So our instructors, this happens more often, I would say, in later years. For example, when we're talking about the human sexuality piece of wellness that's required to be taught under law, and a family may opt out. The way those pieces are taught, it's not obvious to students who's not able to do that. So that's an example of that, just by the way that they teach it in class. When we get into the older grades, and we're typically talking more about a particular book or a particular, you know, portion of a unit, as I said, maybe someone might need an exemption, either based on, again, not something here, maybe medical, maybe a student issue. The way we've been able to handle it efficiently is that, if you notice in our curriculum, this is one of the reasons that there are alternatives there. So for example, when the English department is teaching English 1, formerly known as English 9, there will be a number of different texts that can be utilized. So students are used to seeing people utilize different texts and pieces. You need to be perfectly frank, I think you know, I'm going to be frank in this way. It is difficult sometimes to completely maintain that anonymity, depending on the situation. I'm just thinking of a couple of, you know, over the years, things that I've spoken with parents about. But I do know that the schools and our teachers try hard to make that the case.
And that's the expectation, of course, that they will do the best they can within their means, not to ensure no student is singled out, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a question about the logistics of this. We want to make it somewhat easy for teachers, and every time they have a, starting a new unit, would they have to send out a form? Or is that something that's in the parent handbook? How would, what would the logistics look like?
So when we're talking about the wellness curriculum, for example, where some pieces are required by law, but you can opt out, or there are the pieces not required by law, but you still, as a parent, may not want your child to engage in the instructional activities related to that particular topic. Notifications are sent out when they are doing those units. For example, I think probably all of us have seen this, even as students, most of us as students when we were younger. There's a certain part of the wellness curriculum, typically, we've got grade five, where we start talking about some issues like puberty with students, and that is an example of when they are going to engage in that. It is sent out ahead of time, and a reminder about this policy and the form accompanies it. To your point, I think the rest of what you might be asking, Lynn, is, we've talked about in some of our other meetings, for example, when we did the controversial issues policy over recently, we've made a number of changes, and I think we're still making changes, to how that, the information related to curricular units and books and resources are communicated out. Online, for example, we now have an entire list of the board-approved required texts, and it goes by, Jody, I can't see well enough, if I remember right, it's grade level. Yes. And we just put that together after some of these, you know, the conversations that we've been having over the last, you know, couple of years and trying to be very clear about what is being taught. So that's one of the things that we've done, all of that is now online. And I just saw it a couple of days ago, I was looking for something, so I know that's on our new website also. That took a little bit of time to build and to work with our teachers to do, but we went through that. The other pieces, we made some changes with how teachers would communicate out syllabi at the high school, for example, in the English department, when they were covering potential material that might, I'm trying to think of the word as we used it, because I think we, this is when we discussed the policy, and I don't have that one in front of me, that we we discussed a number of different words that might fit it because, for lack of a better word right now, offensive is not exactly what we were saying, but that might be sensitive, sensitive, I thought is the word. That could be objectionable or sensitive to some. So that's how we have put those out in some of the courses.
Well, also, it was my understanding that these are the actual subjects under which the state says we have a mandatory obligation as a board to allow for the exemptions.
Correct.
We haven't just, you know, set these aside just because, these are actually, these are a must.
Yes.
But we've left the policy a little more inclusive by allowing the additional language just saying that there might be other circumstances under which
Yes.
a student might seek.
And that's our, that's our practice regardless, yes.
Correct.
Lisa.
Yes, so I guess my question goes back to if we are allowing exemptions and we are taking liberty with this policy to go beyond what is required, is everything available to the public in terms of, do they have the capability of reviewing the curriculum in order to make a sound decision as to whether they want to allow their child to partake in this or not?
So at this point, we have migrated the majority of the curriculum to the new website, as I think I mentioned under the update, and I'll just circle back because it makes sense again here, Lisa, to talk about a little bit more. Our curriculum warehouse, where it's easier to pull out the curriculum from and be able to see the standards and the central questions and so forth, is EduPlanet. And that didn't work hand in hand with our previous website. So we had them loaded online and they're there, they just were, I think, a little bit harder to read the way that it was. It's going to be a lot clearer now, the way that we have begun building the new piece of it. So in short, the answer to your question is, every one of them is not online as I sit here tonight. They are in the process of putting the rest from the old website up and also there are some that are pending approval, like I talked about tonight, that will be coming through the district committee and then through the board that will be put up. One of the other changes that we made recently that we're still in the process of came out of a previous curriculum and professional practices committee meeting in which we discussed the prior practice that the district and the board, and this is something we had never talked about in my time here, this was something that had been longstanding until we had this conversation at the meeting, we did not post curricula online until they went completely through the approval process. But the issue with that is that when you're writing curricula at the same time in some cases, based on, for example, you know, a state requirement changing and you don't get them through the entire process, if you don't put them online at all, even while they're in draft form, then people can't review them. So we are, that's another piece that the Teaching and Learning Office, and if Donna was here, she would speak to it tonight also, and probably in even more depth than I'm going to right now, is working on posting the rest of those online. There are some that have not been written yet that are elective courses and we talked about that in the curriculum meeting also. Elective courses here at the high school. And that's where we rely on the syllabus from the teachers still at this point as we continue writing those. And just to reiterate, because I know that the board has heard this in previous meetings as we've talked about these issues, there were nearly no written curricula in the district before 2014. So they, before I started and since I've been here, our office and the schools, the faculty, the department coordinators, two of which are here with us tonight, have been working on writing all of that curricula and it has been a pretty heavy lift, obviously. So the focus had been on the core academic areas from K through 12 and all of those are online. In addition to, as I said earlier, wellness, our digital literacy curriculum is now online. So we moved out from the core academic areas and the majority are now there.
And I recognize that Donna isn't here this evening and she might be the better person to answer the question, but do we have a timeframe in which the entire curricula will be online?
I can answer the question too. Usually I try to be able to make sure I answer all of the questions, as you know, no matter what it is. So I did, to be upfront, I did tell Donna's office, because it's other folks besides Donna that work in it, not to spend time putting curriculum up on the old, in the old fashion, you know, because that's just going to be double the work and take us even longer to get it into the new platform. So the ones that were not on the old site, that they are now trying to program into the new EduPlanet platform, they're working through that and I said, don't stop doing that just to make it on the old site and for people to be able to find. Because to the best of my knowledge, none of those, as I said, are the particularly controversial issues or ones like this that we might have to exempt students from. So when I talked to Donna again about this, actually just yesterday and earlier today, Jodi Krzyszczak and I were talking about the same, I would say for the ones that are written, we are probably two, maybe two weeks out from the rest of them going up. But again, there are others that are still in the process of being written that are electives. Those are done as we cycle them through. So for example, we just finished, almost finished, I believe, math and science, a complete review again from K to 12. So we've also had folks writing some of the electives at the same time that we redid the core one. I don't have, so here's what I would rather have said to you, that I don't, I just didn't have access to before the meeting tonight with Donna not being here, this is the piece I don't have because she and I spoke about it yesterday and even she would have had to dig through quite a bit of things this morning to give it to me for tonight and she wasn't here and I just didn't have time for it. There's, I wanted to be able to provide a list of all of the courses that are taught that there isn't a curriculum written for and I didn't have, I just couldn't do that in time for tonight, knowing it would be a question. So we'll provide that as soon as I can get it done.
So through the chair, tonight, actually, though, we are discussing a specific policy pertaining to exemption from instruction. There are other policies, as we discussed at a subcommittee level, that have to do with access to reviewing curriculum and educational materials as well as controversial materials and I am a little concerned that we're moving away from the policy that's before us.
Yes, you're correct, there are those also. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I answered everybody's questions.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're looking at. Tonight has to do with the mandatory policies that we must provide an exemption for and focus on that for tonight. If there are additional policies that anybody on the board would be interested in adding to our next agenda, please let me know.
Deb. This is a first read, we're not voting on this, is that correct?
We have the opportunity to do that, like we did with the green cleaning, is if it's following legal wording, are you suggesting that you're not prepared to do so?
Okay, well, I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with the wording for family life, education, instruction, that whole section, because it feels as though somehow I'd love to see some wording that connects it to a specific unit. My concern is, we all know, especially in the elementary level, instruction about families doesn't just happen when you're teaching that particular unit. It could happen during a morning meeting when kids are discussing their own families and the diversity of their own families. I would hate for teachers to feel uncomfortable because of this language, that every time we're discussing anything, even peripherally, that they need to make sure kids have an opportunity to opt out or parents have an opportunity to opt out. Do you understand kind of where I'm going with this? And just wondering if the language could somehow narrow that section to include family life, education, instruction as part of the specific curriculum as written within the units rather than just in general?
That's not a conversation we had at the policy level, Lynn, it doesn't mean that we couldn't have it, it's just not a topic, it wasn't raised as an issue. We were talking about this being the definition that the law utilizes. I understand what you're saying and I'm
I'm just worried that some people would take it further than what your, our intent would be, that's all.
Well, I think, you know, again, in a night where we're having some of the comments that we are, I think this is a space where one might say, of course, we want to be transparent with the curriculum. There are, of course, times that a student is going to ask a question in a class or a discussion is going to happen as a result of that, that won't be an exact part of the curriculum and our teachers do their best to deal with. And in some cases, depending on the age of the students and the questions that are asked, that might be, you know, maybe you should go home and ask your mom, dad, or grandma, grandpa, family member. But I understand your point, I'm not sure where we would land on that. I think that if we want, I think that if we want to have a conversation about this, we should come back to the policy committee and leave, and bring this back there so that we're not going around about it here with, because Lynn, you're not on the policy committee, if I remember right.
I hate to hold everything up, but, okay, so
It doesn't matter, from my seat, it doesn't matter because the law is the law and if someone, these are the topics in the curriculum that if you opt, if you want to opt your child out of, you have the ability to do that and we have been doing that for a long time without making a change to the policy. So I, I don't have, from my seat, to push it through without having another conversation if that's what the board would like to do.
Laura, I'll defer to you as the chair of policy.
If this is what the superintendent is recommending, that we bring it back to the policy committee, we can certainly do that.
If other members of the policy committee are comfortable with the language, we could still move it forward as well.
We can certainly do that and people can vote as they feel comfortable. Through the chair, I would look for direction, since we do not meet in May, it would mean this would be delayed at the very earliest until June unless we had a special meeting and I am a little concerned that we would then not have this in place.
Okay, as you're speaking, I'm thinking about something else. Why don't I do some legwork between now and the next board meeting and bring some information back to you again about this? I'll send it in advance if you like, if I, I'm sure I'll get it before then. And if, that way, when we return at the next board meeting
That makes sense.
We can have, if this was a first read anyway,
Yeah.
we can have another conversation. I was just saying, if we're going to have a big conversation about it, taking the time to do that here tonight is not what I'd rather do because I'd like to be able to move forward with the rest of the new business that we have and leave this until next time.
That's fine.
That's my, you know, that's my recommendation.
All right, so we will revisit this at our May meeting. Okay, next is our audit report, 2021. Ms. Russo?
Susan.
Good evening. I'm happy to report that the Board of Ed received a clean audit. The management letter provided by our audit firm had a couple of notes for the town on their side of things, but the Board of Ed was comment-free for the year and we're very proud of that. We've posted on our website the entirety of the audit report, if, at your leisure, if you'd like to read it. For brevity, we did not include that in the packet, but it is on the Board of Ed's website in the business department webpage, so if you can read that at your leisure. But we're very excited and happy and hope next year will be just as good.
Go ahead, Jay.
So I would just like to congratulate Susan Russo and the entire team at the central office for the clean audit. I know that's representative of the good work that they do on a daily basis, so thank you for all that.
Yes, we definitely appreciate that and we enjoy that there was absolutely nothing to comment on, so we appreciate that. Thank you, Susan. All right, next is Portrait of the Graduate. I know we have Mr. Enquist along with Ms. Lawler, Ms. Berliner. Are you staying at your seats? Do you have a microphone too?
Yes, we'll, we'll set them up. I just want to lead in and again, thank you both for not only all of this work that you have been co-facilitating at the high school for some time, but for being here with us tonight and hanging in there and staying with us. I know you have some home obligations that they may have expected you home a little bit earlier tonight, I apologize. But thank you again for doing this and board members, I think if you have questions, Jacqueline and Lisa, Mike, you would rather stop along the way or what would you rather do, just because we usually try to set it up as we begin?
Yeah, we'll stop, maybe stop along the way.
Okay, because I think it would probably be best to stop at each spot and then we'll see.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, I'm Jacqueline Lawler, I'm the NIASC co-chair as well as the math department coordinator.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Berliner, I am co-chairing NIASC with Jacqueline and am the world language coordinator.
Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the Portrait of the Graduate or what we sort of deem as qualities that students from Avon High School should have upon graduation and how we really looked at this as a K-12 initiative. So NIASC, or the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, our last decennial visit was actually in the fall of 2013 and we are due for our next sort of update, which is a collaborative conference, which is also known as sort of like a mini-visit. And in this mini-visit, which will happen in the fall of 2023, it was supposed to be in the fall of 2021 and then it's been moved up. The chair of the NIASC visit as well as a NIASC representative will look at our self-study, which will need to be completed before then, which Lisa and I will facilitate. And after the self-study, we will come up with sort of a plan of improvement. And then our decennial visit, which was supposed to be the fall of 2023, is now being pushed to the fall of 2025. So it's just like a little bit of background of what's sort of to come in terms of NIASC. The NIASC process is really seven steps. The, we are kind of pre these seven steps at this moment in time, but we are preparing for step one and we will go through those seven steps in the next two years.
So this next slide shows just, there's been some changes at the, from NIASC regarding the tenure cycle and previously it was the decennial visit would happen and there wasn't a whole lot of movement that the faculty would see along the way. And with our new standards, it's much more of a continuous improvement process. So we are at the beginning of getting ready for our self-study. We were anticipating really starting that this spring, but with the visit being pushed off a little bit, we're still kind of at the beginning stages. Then we will have that collaborative conference where we will have that mini-visit with whoever will be accrediting, or chairing the accreditation process. And from there, we would have a development of our growth plan, which would align with the district improvement plan. And we would have to implement that specifically for the NIASC process, it would be what we implement at the high school level. We would have to write our summary report, have the next visit and continuous to, continuously improve that plan that we develop. So as a faculty, we started looking at the revised standards for 2020 and the various standards have changed for the process that we will be accredited for. And specifically, we started as a NIASC committee here at the high school focusing on standard two, which is where we felt like as high school faculty members, we were, we really were responsible for the most impact.
Next slide, please.
Thank you. So as Lisa just said, we really are focusing on this student learning component because as teachers, this is where we really feel the most comfortable. So in order to acclimate the faculty So in order to acclimate the faculty with this NIASC process, we decided to run two professional development days surrounding this student learning component and really wanted to get a sense of what we are currently doing in our current practice and how that relates to our Portrait of the Graduate, which we will get into a little bit on the next few slides.
Actually, if you can go back one second. So with this vision of the graduate and here, we're calling, we're calling it Portrait of the Graduate in Avon. So those two terms are kind of used interchangeably. This really does align with what our goal is as a school. So this is the component we've been looking at for the past couple of years. So starting, we can look at the next slide. All the way back in 2018, in our minds as a high school faculty, we were halfway to the next decennial visit. And those timelines have changed, which is great for us. Gives us a little bit more time. So we actually had a contingency of faculty members here from the high school that attended a conference run by NIASC to kind of start to get us thinking about what we see in the Vision of the Graduate. And from there, we also started working with Jonathan Costa from Advance. He really is an expert in the NIASC process and conducts, not only visits here within the US, but also internationally. And he helped us facilitate various discussions of really thinking about the essential skills our students will need upon graduation and what life will look like for them as adults. So not only CPDC participate in, in some of those workshops with pre-K-12 representation, but as well as the members of the high school faculty that are on our specific NIASC committee. And then the following school year, we launched the Thought Exchange Activity, which was really a survey given out to students, staff, community members, really anyone that's on our listserv, asking them questions related to what they thought were the essential skills and attributes our graduates needed for life after their school experience. And then we also pulled various district documents, like the Blueprint for Excellence, and focused as CPDC and our NIASC committee of really having thoughtful discussions of those various skills and attributes we were looking for students to have when they were graduating Avon High School. And for each of those skills and attributes, the high school staff sat down and really wrote a lot of descriptors and brainstormed what those looked like. And we started to create various indicators of success. And then we used examples from our existing curriculum in that process.
So after that whole process, we actually had, after all the data was collected from all the stakeholders, we actually ended up with nine different skills and attributes, which were then combined into the following. So our three skills, which are measurable components, which we have developed rubrics to create, which we'll talk about in a little bit, are communication expression, collaboration, and critical and creative thinking. And then the dispositions, which are more reflective in nature, are cultural competence and independent and adaptable.
So we had pages of lists of brainstormed ideas of those skills and attributes. And through our many discussions, we were really able to combine a lot of those and, and fall on these three skills and two dispositions. So work got tabled a little bit during the COVID process. We came back last spring as a full faculty to, or excuse me, as CPDC, the NIASC committee, to look at that condensed list. We had a couple of different work groups from pre-K eight and nine twelve to draft rubrics for the various indicators of, indicators of attainment for each skill with having indicators for beginning, developing proficient in advance for those skills. And then there were also some self-reflective rubrics written for the two dispositions. And again, those are, are reflective in nature. Those are not evaluated on the teacher's part.
So the next couple of slides really just run through those indicators of each of our skills and dispositions. So the first skill, the communication express, and expression and effective communicator demonstrates the ability to perform these types of indicators in the classroom and in activities and assessments, labs, performance tasks, et cetera. So I'll give you a second if you want to read through those. And then the second one, collaboration, same, same idea. So again, these are the skills which we have developed rubrics for to evaluate students on collaboration. And then the third skill, critical and creative thinking. Again, a rubric was developed to evaluate students and their ability to think critically and creatively. And the rubrics were developed based upon current rubrics that we have already been using at Avon High School. And then we took those rubrics and sort of tailored them more towards these skills and added some components as well. And then rubrics were created in the other schools that sort of mirror our rubrics and fit the needs of the elementary school students and middle school students.
And then for the two dispositions, we drafted definitions of what those attributes look like and again, ways that students might demonstrate those particular dispositions. What was nice is kind of those pre-K-12 conversations of how we really, regardless of kind of the building you were in, we all had similar goals in mind for students. And it's not often that we really get to have those pre-K-12 conversations. So culturally competent was one of those dispositions. And there's a lot of different ways that we discussed how students would demonstrate that attribute. And then the second one that we agreed upon pre-K-12, we advance to the next one, was independent and adaptable. And it's interesting because this is definitely one that kind of pre-pandemic, post-pandemic looked different for us. And it was one, I think, that we all kind of felt like after the fact, this was one of those dispositions that became obvious to us, given what we had all experienced.
So just to reiterate again, the two dispositions, there are, there are, we are not evaluating students using rubrics on the dispositions. This is more of a self-reflection piece.
And so then this current school year, we brought Portrait of the Graduate work to our full faculty. We did two different professional development sessions that were both half-day professional development. The first one in November, we showed the full faculty where we were with the Portrait of the Graduate work, the various indicators. We had our faculty work in their various grade level teams, course teams, on how their current practices align with the three skills. So they kind of weighted which skill they felt like their CLT was, was kind of already addressing the most in their current curriculum. And then kind of we had them rank a little bit of like number one for their particular content area to kind of where maybe which of those skills they weren't completely addressing in their curriculum because we wanted to start to take inventory of where this work was already happening in the building.
Can you go back, please? I'm sorry. And then in the March professional development, we had teachers in their collaborative teams. So courses that they teach that are similar really look at what they're currently doing. And then we had, and how that would relate to the Portrait of the Graduate and the rubrics. And it was really impressive, actually. I was impressed personally with what came out of that conversation and just hearing about some of the really interesting lessons that teachers are doing in their classrooms. You know, I'm, I'm in the math department. I, I really know what's happening in math. But it was really impressive how this is really something that we are doing already. And it was, it was really nice to hear that, what teachers are doing in other subject areas.
I definitely agree that it was, March was a really powerful day because I also had gone to the day thinking that, you know, maybe collaboration wasn't something that as an academic teacher, I was continuously working on. But then as like some of our Unified Arts teachers were discussing components of their curriculum and some of the tech ed teachers were explaining some of their projects, it really made me kind of sit back and think about how this work is being done across the building. And we have kind of started to identify those areas where we can really start to see benchmarks of this work happening and how we are preparing students for life beyond Avon High School.
So our next steps in this process, the rubrics are pretty finalized. We just really wanted to take them for like a test run with some of the lessons and assessments that we're currently using and see have the teachers actually run through activities and actually grade students based upon these rubrics, just to make sure they're, you know, solidified. Also, we're working on a graphic. I know Dr. Rusak is really working on that with a particular student to sort of have a visual of the Portrait of the Graduate. We are also getting ready to roll out this, the rubrics to our pre-K eight faculty, students and staff and align the pre-K eight report cards to align with some of these identified skills and attributes. So that's sort of what's to come.
And then, you know, at the high school level, we know that we are really already working towards those skills that came out of all of our conversations as being three essential skills. However, kind of we now need to take a little bit of a closer look at those indicators that we identified and start to look at modifying some current lessons or assessments to really address the, all of the indicators we had for each of those skills. And again, kind of as I had said, for each grade level, we would like to identify some benchmark assessments. So they're kind of our progress checkpoints along the way of meeting all of the skills of the Portrait of the Graduate so that we know that, for instance, by the end of ninth grade, students will have completed X, Y, Z lesson assessment that would be indicators of their progress.
I just want to say quickly, I think one of the best pieces of this process is the unification of K, pre-K-12. This is really the first time where we're looking at rubrics district-wide and really following, giving us the ability to follow students kind of throughout their Avon High School career. And that's a big change from our previous NIASC visit in 2013.
So we have had some preliminary discussions of how this rollout looks to the community and especially to students who this, you know, most really addresses. And we're looking to start with our incoming ninth graders of collecting evidence of their work towards Portrait of the Graduate and making them aware that, you know, this is our goal for them, for their graduation. We felt like ninth grade was a good place to start so that by the end of senior year, we would have a great sample of their work.
And just in time for our visit as well.
Thank you. Oh, you're welcome. Any questions?
That's very comprehensive and I know it's an overview and we know how long you've been working on this. So it is impressive and we certainly have that objective to send them off into the world successfully. So thank you for that. Were there any questions from Board members? Go. Yep.
Thank you again. In lieu of a question, I, I want to just reiterate some pieces of this. If you could maybe go back surely to the, the collaboration piece, for example. Just to, or either one would work, or communication and expression, either one. Sorry, no, collaboration. When we were talking about getting everyone together pre-K to 12, I think I've said this previously when we were working on our strategic plan, our Blueprint for Excellence, that one of our focus areas was to be able to do this as a district, not just as a high school because in the end, you are a graduate of Avon Public Schools, no matter what place you, you join us in. And so if we just like trying to root the continuous improvement efforts in the blueprint, if we anchor further to the Portrait of the Graduate from pre-K to 12, then we're all on the same page about what it is that's most important that we're doing. So that was intentional in how we did this process and I, I think it's gone very well and appreciative, obviously. But one of the things I wanted to point out, because I thought of it while you were speaking, is, you know, we've heard comments a number of times about what social and emotional learning looks like and is there a curriculum and so forth? And I wanted to point this out because I think this is one good example. And again, this isn't, I don't want to go through all of the pieces of social, emotional learning or growth tonight and take the time to do that in addition to this. But collaboration, for example, is one of the standards in the social, emotional learning standards. We don't have a set curriculum in social, emotional learning. I think that, you know, over time, some of the ways that we as the public as a whole have come to understand some of those pieces differently or perhaps in, in different places, they're being implemented differently. I can't really speak to that. What I can tell you about it here, and we've spoken about this before as a board and pieces of this are in our strategic plan, is that we are talking about the interpersonal, social skills and, you know, emotional intelligence that comes along with a continuum from pre-K to 12, being able to meet those 21st century skills of collaboration, critical thinking and so forth. So the state has required those attributes to be present also across the continuum. And on a separate note, they have required, the legislature has required the State Department of Education to put together a standalone framework, like I talked about earlier tonight, for social, emotional learning. We here in Avon talked about plotting that out over the years and made decisions that since this, these pieces that would be there, that would be the big picture items of social, emotional learning are present throughout all of these critical skills, critical thinking, the cultural competence, the collaboration, the communication skills, that we would weave them through in our standing curriculums. And I think, you know, we've talked about that as we've taken things through curriculum of professional practices. But I just thought this was a good spot to mention that because of the questions or conversations about that. Certainly, we'd talk more about that another time too. But I think you've had good conversations from pre-K to 12 about how to ensure that we're meeting all of these 21st century knowledge and skills, which is the big picture for us and our graduates.
All right. So Ms. Berliner, Ms. Lawler, thank you so much. We really appreciate this. Oh, Jay, you had something to say?
No, I just want to thank you both for leading this. And I understand the extensive time you put into this and knowing you both as teachers and how much you care about the students. And we talked about, you know, the entire student and what you've done here. Having gone through the, the process before, you know, this is all just preparation for the next visit. So if someone could explain to the rest of the board, like, you know, this is all in preparation for the work you do every day, but also for that visit. How is that visit going to work and what does that entail?
So we wish we had more information about that today. We were supposed to actually be in a full-day PD day, PD today with NIASC. But because district timelines have been pushed out because of the pandemic, we're waiting to hear a little bit of the specifics of how that collaborative conference will go in the next visit because the process has changed with the 2020 standards. But we do know we will be conducting, when we get our firm date, we'll launch the self-study. The NIASC will give us an evaluation tool for all stakeholders to look at the standards and with guiding questions to help us develop our report of the self-study. We'll have that mini-visit with very few representatives from NIASC. It's not the large contingency of the previous decennial visits. From there, we'll write that improvement plan as a school in preparation of the decennial visit. So, and those decennial visits are shorter. I know that a couple of administrators in the room have been active on some of the NIASC evaluations for some local schools to help us as well as what that will look like. So we are in the beginning stages of getting ready for the process. However, we know we need to align to the 2020 standards. So as a staff, we're starting to look at where we are in alignment with those and just. and decided that that standard two of student learning and looking at the Vision of the Graduate, which from our previous visit of the previous, from the nine that we had of the social, or the academic, social civic expectations from before, that was one of the largest recommendations from the previous visit was to readdress the expectations. We align that now with the Portrait of the Graduate. So that's where we are with our work. And this, right, and the development of our school-wide rubrics. So that's where we are right now with the faculty-led part of the work. And, you know, as Dr. Carne Mola had said in 2014, with the start of the documented curriculum, we knew as a high school staff, that was also a huge recommendation. So we feel like we've made great progress in working towards written documented curriculum as well. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it...
The process looks a little bit different than...
Yeah, the process is different than before.
This is the first time the high school will go through the process as it has been revised from the previous accreditation visits that, for example, Jay, you would have been on. And so what they're referring to is some pieces of it still have to be given to us to be able to even share with you. But in the past, I have gone out on NEAS visits and had the training. I haven't had, I just don't have the time really to do much of that anymore. However, as I said, we have some other administrators who have. Mr. Medic is one who has been through all of the newest training and has chaired these committees in several other school districts at this point and spent time here going through pieces with our team to talk about the other side of the experience and helping them prepare also. So I think there'll be more to come for you as a board about what that timeline looks like. There'll be more to come for us as the faculty, staff and administration on what it looks like.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our second communication from the public. Ms. Moy, do we have speakers?
We do. We have two speakers. First one is Erin Barthel.
Hello. Thank you so much for letting me talk today. My name is Dr. Erin Barthel and I live on Wright Drive in Avon. And I just want to start off by saying that I fully support what my friends for Equity in Avon School said today and so fully support the LGBTQ community as well. I wanted to say that here in the Avon community, we would never say that somebody with a disability shouldn't be in our public schools, that it wasn't the appropriate venue for somebody in a wheelchair, one of our children in a wheelchair, to be in the school, that they should be kept out of schools, that their medical problems have no place in our schools, that we would never say that our student feels alienated or uncomfortable because someone in a wheelchair is in their class, that our students feel like they're having to choose somebody else's lifestyle because they would have to use the school ramp at school because somebody in their class has a wheelchair. We would never say that our students feel excluded from extra services because they don't have an aide in their classroom, like somebody with a wheelchair or somebody with autism has. And our students would never say that they feel uncomfortable because they don't see themselves in a book with a child with a wheelchair or somebody with a seeing eye dog or other aide that they need because they have a disability. We would never say this about differently abled children. Sorry. We would never say that about children that may look different because they have different physical abilities. They were born this way and they have every right to be in school and to be supported in school. But for some reason, we use this language with discussions around LGBTQ youth and teaching Black history in school. I'm shaking. I'm sorry because I wrote this while I was sitting here. So I wish I had better notes. But what I heard tonight was that their students have right to privacy, that it's not the appropriate venue, these are all quotes from today, that discussing these political points in school is alienating. It should be kept out of the school. It makes their children feel uncomfortable, that medical things have no place in our schools and that they're having lifestyle choices pushed upon them. For some reason, we use this language with discussions around LGBTQ youth and dealing with Black history in school. We use this language for human beings that just look differently from white, cisgender, heterosexual individuals and are therefore treated like they're wrong or threatening. It's not okay to use this for a person's disability or for people with different religions. And it's not okay to use this with people who have diverse gender identities, sexualities and different races. These are people, people, human beings, children, and some of them may be in their homes. And I hope that someday they can look back and say that their experience at Avon Public Schools was one they felt supported and one that they didn't feel like they were alienating other children or pushing their lifestyles because the teachers around them and the Board of Education around them supported them just like everyone else in the school.
Thank you, Ms. Barthel. Next.
Our last speaker is Chris Campbell.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Good evening. Chris Campbell, I reside at 8 Heathcote. I'm also with the Friends of Equity. I wanted to say thank you to my team for what they said. There's a lot of tension in the room this evening. Rightfully so. There's many things that get said. And what I try to hear from the other side is that we all want our kids to be educated, wanted, needed and loved, right? And there was a comment made that, you know, certain conversations shouldn't happen. In my house, my son asks me things that I have to answer. My son goes to RBS. My son loves school. He is pre-K. He's four. And yes, I'm biased, but that little dude is smart. He loves it. He loves to read. He reads so well. So proud of my son. But he also asked me, how come none of the teachers look like mommy? Because mommy's Black. So we have to have that conversation. I can't just say, well, you know, son, I mean, I have to give him an answer. There's going to be plenty of conversations moving forward in our town that we have to have. They're not easy, but just because you don't share the same experience does not make it not real. All of these things are real. Things are changing. People are changing. People are moving in. And I plan on staying here. I plan on remaining here. I want my sons to flourish here. I have one in and I have two more on the way. I don't want to put my kids in a different school. I want them to be at Avon. And I appreciate all the hard work that the board does and teachers do. Y'all got a hard job. We have to understand that it's not okay just to dismiss because you've never experienced it. I hope that other people, we can't just sit here and scream at each other. That's not how conversation works. So I hope that we can come to some point where we can have a conversation, a real conversation, and get to a point where there are certain things in there that we all have in common. We all love our kids dearly. So let's focus on things that we have in common because we can't keep screaming at each other. Thank you guys for everything that you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Shirley, that was our final comment. All right. Our next item on the agenda is communication from Avon Board of Education members. Do we have anyone that would like to say something? Lisa?
Yes, I was not at the last meeting, but I received a beautiful gift bag full of cards and appreciation for being a board member. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you very much to all the children who wrote terrific letters to me and the teachers and of course, all the appreciation we always get from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. That is definitely the best part, for sure. Anybody else? All right, Jeff? No? Okay.
All right. So now we are at the point of the meeting where I would like to make a motion to invite Dr. Carne Mola and Mr. Medic into an executive session with us for two purposes. One is to discuss, have a discussion concerning attorney-client privilege related to the Board of Education's legal responsibilities and interplay with community groups, as well as a discussion of negotiation strategies of non-union contracts. It is 9:20. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. All in favor? Aye. All right. So at 9:20, we will enter into executive session. We thank you for joining us this evening. We'll now clear the room other than the board and Dr. Carne Mola and Mr. Medic.